Okay, welcome everyone to the planning board meeting. Today is May 18th, 2020, and it is 7:04 PM. Barbara, take it away.
Okay, all right, this is Barbara Krizak. Welcome, everyone. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note, we will be asking that for all microphones of public users, they're all muted to start until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time only, please use the raise hand button in Zoom if you are on a computer, or dial pound, I mean star nine, if you're on a phone. Once again, that's star nine if you'd like to speak on a phone. Your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called when it's your turn to speak. During the public comment session only, the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting that you're not using, and please identify yourself before you speak at all times. And that is for truly everyone. That's something we have to really get used to. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via AP-TV. Please join me in the salute to the flag.
The United States of America, and to the Republic of China, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Today is Monday, May 18th, 2020, and I will now take roll call. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter. Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Thank you. Trudy Syfax. Okay, I don't think Trudy is here. She might be by phone, but we're going to mark her as absent. Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Krizak.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, this is Barbara once again. We're looking to get approval of the minutes of May 4th, 2020. It was a regular meeting. Does anyone on the board have anything, any concerns about that, or any changes they would like to make to those minutes? Okay, if not, then can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Jim Henry, motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim Henry and a second by Yvonne Clayton. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. And the members abstaining are Mayor John Moore and Trudy Syfax.
Okay, today we have two applications. They've been split into two pieces for the AP Triangle. One application is for the subdivision of the lots, and the second application is for a site plan for 48-unit townhouse project. At this point, I, Barbara Krizak, have to recuse myself from these applications because I am within the 200-foot limit. So I'm going to pass it on to Vice Chair Rick Lambert, who will take on this, take over this meeting at this point.
Hi, this is Rick. The first section of this application is by AP Triangle LLC. It's for a subdivision bounded by Cookman Avenue, Asbury Avenue, and Heck Street, blocks 3203, lots 1 through 19, blocks 3206, lots 1 through 4, block 3801, lot 1, and the waterfront redevelopment WRA zone. The application is for a major subdivision of five lots. Who's going to be our first speaker, Jennifer?
Yes, hold on. Yes, I will begin with my opening statement.
One moment, one moment. I raised my hand, I don't know if Irene saw it.
Yeah, you're unmuted, Jack.
Okay, Irene?
Yes, sir.
Yes. The minutes should be marked B1 for identification in the record.
Yes, the minutes are marked as Exhibit B1 as shown on your screen. Sorry, missed that.
That's okay. Why don't we, at this point, before Jennifer starts, let's swear in both Donna and Jason, and then we'll have them sworn, and then we can proceed with Jennifer and her kids. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Donna and Jason?
Yep.
Donna, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to give in this matter this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Donna?
I do.
Okay. Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fisher, board engineer.
Thank you, okay. Oh, and before we get to Jennifer, I've reviewed all the notices for this meeting. All the notices are in proper form. We have jurisdiction to proceed.
Great.
Okay. Good evening, members. My name is Jennifer Porter. I am the attorney for the applicant AP Triangle LLC. On behalf of the applicant, we wish to thank the board, its counseling consultants, and planning staff for developing and implementing virtual hearing procedures based upon the DCA guidelines so that we can conduct this hearing this evening remotely. As Mr. Serpico indicated, notice has been properly given for this hearing pursuant to publication in the Asbury Park Press, and written notice was provided to all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. The applicant AP Triangle LLC, which is formerly known as Madison Wesley Lake III LLC, is an affiliate of Asbury Partners. Asbury Partners, as we all know, is the designated master developer of the waterfront redevelopment area of the city in accordance with the waterfront redevelopment plan of 2002 as amended. AP Triangle is aptly named for the triangular piece of property bounded by Heck Street, Cookman Avenue, and Asbury Avenue within the waterfront redevelopment area that is the subject of this application. AP Triangle is proposing to develop an approximately two-acre portion of the triangular parcel with a 48-unit townhouse residential development project. AP Triangle's project, as the board previously indicated, consists of two primary components, a major subdivision application and a preliminary and final major site plan application, which will be presented in order with the subdivision first. With respect to the major subdivision, as our site engineer will describe, the application consists of an application to merge all of the existing parcels forming the triangular block, which is 24 parcels, and then to subdivide the resulting merged lot into five separate lots. Three of those lots will be the development lots upon which we will construct three buildings in three phases consisting of 16 units each. There would be also two remainder lots. It's important to note with respect to the three development lots up front that the reason why we are breaking the development lots into three separate lots is for environmental considerations, so that the homes can be closed in each building strings sequentially to obtain response action outcomes, or RIO as they're known, which are what signifies completion of the remediation process. Our site engineer will explain this further, but what this does is it avoids having owners of any condominium units taking ownership over yet-to-be-remediated common elements on other lots. The lots will be merged upon construction of the last unit to allow for creation of a single condominium ownership community, and this is the same that was done for various other condominium projects throughout the waterfront redevelopment area in the city, including, for example, South Grand. Another important point to make is that apart from the development lots, we will have a 6,091-square-foot triangular remainder lot that will be created at the corner of Cookman and Heck avenues. On that lot, a public open space will be created. Now, that public open space has been the subject of extensive consultation and coordination with city council. In accordance with the requirements and specific guidelines set forth in the subsequent developer agreement, it will be designed, constructed, landscaped, and maintained in accordance with landscaping plans that will be reviewed and approved by the mayor and city council. In addition, and also in accordance with that SDA, the public open space will be conveyed to the city but will continue to be maintained by the master developer for a period of five years upon completion. The final remainder lot of the five lots that will be created is another triangular-shaped lot consisting of approximately 84,000 square feet at the base of the existing triangle along Cookman and Asbury. There are no current plans for development of that lot. It will be reserved for future development. Now, in connection with the subdivision application, we will be seeking three bulk variances. Two of those variances relate specifically to the public open space lot, the remainder lot that we are creating. One is with respect to the minimum lot size to allow a lot less than 15,000 square feet, and as you'll hear, based on the justification from our planner, no vertical construction is being proposed, and that should significantly impact the board's weight as it relates to whether or not the variance should be granted. In addition, in connection with the public open space lot, we're asking that the frontage along Heck Street to this lot, that again is being utilized as public open space, be permitted to be 85.07 feet where 100 feet is required. Other than those two variants, we have one small other bulk variance related to one of the development lots to have a secondary frontage along Heck Street that's just under a foot. In connection with the site plan application, which will be presented second this evening, we are proposing, as I indicated, to develop a townhouse community featuring three buildings comprised of 16 units each. As you will hear from the testimony, the development is consistent with the requirements and guidelines of the waterfront redevelopment plan. The architectural design of the townhouse buildings, as well as the orientation of those buildings and the proposed site features have been the subject of extensive discussion with the city and its professionals. The small amount of design exceptions which are being sought in connection with the site plan application are entirely in keeping with relief that has been granted for various other successful residential projects in the waterfront redevelopment area and stem primarily from market-driven demands and considerations which drive the design in this area. It is important to note that AP Triangle was designated as a subsequent developer for this project in February of 2020 after a lengthy review process. We first appeared before the city's technical review committee last July, July of 2019, and as a result of comments received, as well as follow-up meetings with the city's professionals and staff throughout the summer, we made significant changes to the architectural details, the facade materials, the colors of the proposed buildings. These changes that were made will all be incorporated into the testimony we'll hear this evening. In addition, we made changes to the site plan that addressed comments concerning the preservation and functionality of the site and to allow for the creation of more internal walkways. Additional lighting fixtures were added to allow for greater illumination, and very specifically, significant changes were made to the landscaping plan to allow for greater diversity of plantings, as well as greater use of native plantings. AP Triangle appeared in front of city council to present its plans for this project last October. We negotiated the SDA subsequent developer agreement over the course of the winter. It was finalized for approval by city council in February, along with a resolution which approved AP Triangle as a subsequent developer and authorized this application that you have before you this evening to proceed to the planning board. The plans presented this evening are reflective of the collective effort and the input received and incorporated into this project, and we believe advance the principles of the waterfront redevelopment plan by developing new residential buildings that extend Asbury Park's oceanside character in a contemporary way. Pursuant to our discussions with the planning department, as we indicated, the subdivision application will be presented first. We will be providing testimony on the subdivision application by two professionals. First, our engineer, Sean Delaney, from Bowman Engineering, will be discussing the plan for the merger and five-lot subdivision in detail. He will also provide the foundation and engineering rationale for the three bulk variances I mentioned. Next, our planner, Kenan Hughes, from Phillips Price Greig Lehaney &amp; Hughes, will provide the planning rationale in support of the relief being requested. If the board has no questions for me, I would like to begin with our first witness.
Okay.
Mr. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Serpico, would you like to swear in the witness before we proceed?
Yes, yes. Sean, can't see you.
I'm here.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Okay, do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your affiliation with the applicant, and Jennifer will question you from there.
Certainly. Name is Sean "S-E-A-N" Delaney, D-E-L-A-N-Y. I am with Bowman Consulting. I am the site civil engineer for the project, hired by the applicant for this, for the site. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, have a Bachelor of Science from, I may have myself, Jen, let me know, but Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from NJIT in 1999, licensed since 2003.
The, Sean, you were the applicant for the swimming pool project, engineer for the swimming pool project?
For the beach club, yes, I was.
Yeah, okay. For the board members, we've already qualified Sean as a licensed professional engineer and expert. In that case, we can, if you like, we can waive the voir dire.
Sure, I think that's appropriate.
Sure, okay.
Thank you very much.
Great. Before Mr. Delaney begins, Irene, have you granted Mr. Delaney access to control the screen?
I should be able to, yes.
Yes, Sean, you can go ahead and share your screen now.
Great, so Mr. Delaney, could you please provide the board with an overview of the location and proposed subdivision?
Certainly. You can see the exhibit, correct?
Yes.
Could you please describe this exhibit, indicating the name of it, the date, and what was prepared?
Certainly. This exhibit. I've got feedback here. This is an aerial map exhibit of the site. Exhibit A8 dated April 29th, 2020, was prepared by my office under my office. It basically shows the triangle block. The entire property is along Asbury Avenue to the north, Cookman Ave. to the south, and Heck.
I'm sorry, Sean, I'm just going to interrupt you for one moment. We have some feedback issue. So I'm going to ask all of the board members to mute themselves at this time. And I will mute them also. Okay, Sean, you're unmuted. Let's try that again, please.
Okay, that sounds better. So as was, as Ms. Porter mentioned, the site is a triangle-shaped property project located with Heck Street to the west, Asbury Avenue to the north, and Cookman Ave. to the south. It's made up of 24 existing lots identified as blocks 3203, lots 1 through 19, block 3206, lots 1 through 4, and block 3801, lot 1. The total tract area is 179,808 square feet along the entire parcel for this. Surrounding uses include, to the north, is Library Square Park, vacant land right across the street, Sea View Tower Residentials and the Vibe Condos down at the eastern end of Asbury Avenue. To the west, across Heck Street, you have two single-family homes, as well as the Monroe Development that was recently constructed. And then to the south, you have the Wesley Lake Park on the corner, Wesley Grove Condos, the tandem cycle is use, and then a surface parking lot all the way down on the east end of Cookman Avenue. The portion of the site that will be developed, which we'll go into a little further too, is showing the AP Triangle Townhomes is located up on the western end of the entire triangle parcel, which we'll get into more detail during the site plan, touch on a little bit during the subdivision application as well. Moving on to the next exhibit, it gives an overview of the surrounding uses and where the site is. I don't know what that is, the colors there. The next exhibit is Exhibit A3. It is the subdivision plan that was submitted as part of the application. It's dated February 12th, 2020. It was prepared by my office, by my survey department, under my direction. This is the preliminary and final proposed subdivision for the property. Showing the entire parcel, once again, Asbury Avenue north is to the top, Cookman Avenue to the south, and Heck Street to the west. So as Ms. Porter mentioned in her summer, in her beginning overview, the entire lot is 24 lots that are being essentially eliminated and reconfigured to form five proposed lots on the site. Five lots will consist of Lot 101, Lot 103, and Lot 105 up on the western end. They will be where the proposed residential development as part of the subdivision application will be constructed. Lot 1.02, the large triangular piece to the east, that is the future development lot. And then Lot 1.04 down at the bottom at the intersection of Cookman and Heck, that is the public open space lot for the development. As she also mentioned, the purpose of the subdivision for the residential portion for lots 101, 103, and 105, that is because of environmental requirements in order for occupancy of the buildings. The, in order to, for an individual who purchases a unit to occupy that unit, the site must be remediated to NJDEP residential standards and receive a remedial action outcome on the parcel. So by subdividing the three lot, three building lots off, they can remediate each lot separately as they're building three lots, construct the building, start moving people in to one of the units while they're continuing with the remediation on the other lots and obtaining the RIOs from the DEP. If they did, if the applicant did not propose to subdivide this, the entire lot would have to be cleaned up, capped, all the buildings constructed before a single person could move in. So it's an effort to clean sites up and get people into the site faster, you know, and get people living into the property before the entire development is completed. So as she also mentioned, that once the, all three lots would have all the buildings and site improvements constructed, that these three lots would then be consolidated into a single lot. So you'd be left with Lot 1.02, another lot here, future lot, possibly 106, and then the 104 down in the corner. So essentially, you're having, it's really a temporary subdivision of these lots for the residential portion, and the final result will have a three-lot subdivision as opposed to five lots, and the residential will be under common ownership and a homeowners association for the maintenance and upkeep of all the common elements. In particular, so Lot 1.01 will house one of the buildings proposed, as you'll see in the site plan application. That lot is 24,103 square feet, fronts primarily on Asbury Avenue to the north. There is a secondary frontage on Heck Street. It's located on that corner. Lot 1.02 is 84,767 square feet of a lot for future development. Lot 103 will also house another building with 16 residential units, totaling 31,779 square feet. It only has frontage on Cookman Avenue, and it will bound it by the residential lots to the north and west, and the remainder lot, a future lot to the east. Lot 104 is the open space lot, public open space lot, 6,092 square feet for the plan, frontage on both Cookman and Heck Street. And then the last residential lot, 105, 33,067 square feet, fronting entirely on Heck Street. So as Ms. Porter pointed out, the sites are mostly comply with the waterfront redevelopment plan zoning standards, the bulk standards, except for three particular instances. The first one, we're going to start down with Lot 104, which is the public open space lot. So waterfront development redevelopment plan requires a 15,000-square-foot minimum lot size. This lot is 6,092 square feet, so about 9,000 square feet short of that requirement. In addition, requires a frontage of 100 feet along roadways. We have 166.58 along Cookman to the south, but to the west, we only, there's only 85.07 feet short of the 100 on Heck Street. Once again, this is a public open space lot, not for vertical development. And the frontage over here on Heck Street is kind of acts as a secondary frontage to the primary frontage on Cookman. The second, those are the first two relief items, variances requested or deviations requested from the bulk standards. The third one relates to Lot 1.01, where one of the residential home buildings is going to be constructed. It has frontage on Asbury to the north and Heck Street to the west. The lot frontage, while it complies along Asbury at 243.89 feet, we're just shy of the 100-foot required on Heck at 98.59. Once again, this is a secondary frontage. The building is being oriented toward Asbury Avenue. So Heck Street is acting almost as a side yard in this case, but this is only a temporary deviation because once the sites are fully developed, these three lots will be combined again. This 98.59 dimension will be added to the frontage of Lot 1.05, so it'll be over 300, it's almost 380, 378 feet of frontage along that for the lot when it's completed. So that's all the direct I have for this application. There were some comments from inside engineering regarding the major subdivision completeness review in there.
I'm sorry, Sean, to interrupt you. Before you do that, let me ask the board members if they have any questions so far.
Certainly.
If you, if anyone can raise their hand if they have a question. Jim Henry, go ahead and speak, Mr. Henry.
Jim Henry, what are your plans for Lot 102? You're going to have a... You're going to have a, you want to construct a building on Lot 1.03 that is going to be facing that lot. What are your plans for that lot as it interfaces with Lot 1.03?
Right now, there are no plans proposed for Lot 1.02. So I don't have, so I can't give you an answer to what, what, what's going to go there. Has not been determined at this point yet.
Well, you make it kind of, you make it kind of tough for the planning board to envision what is going to be right across the alleyway or right of way, or the sidewalk, or whatever you want to call that strip of land that separates the, the two lots. And how are we, how can we make a valued judgment if we don't have an idea of what is going to go on that lot?
To speak to that question, so the applicant has no conceptual plans or no specific plans for future development of that lot. But as with all of the, the projects, is seeking to do one of the uses primarily consistent with the principal permitted uses within the waterfront redevelopment area. So it would be a use which, under the WRA, would be entirely consistent with what's allowed for this area.
Oh, okay, let me ask you then, along those lines, why would we even consider approving a lot, Lot 1.04, that is only 40% of the minimum size lot?
That lot will only be used for a public open space area for the benefit of the community, these lots, as well as the surrounding areas. So it's there just to break out for a pump, basically a public use of the property.
Correct, and if I could speak to that, that lot has been dedicated as public open space. That's a requirement set forth in our subsequent developer agreement, which we are bound by with city council. And upon completion of it as public open space, it will be conveyed to the city, and that must be done and completed in connection with the completion of the Phase 1 building. And so therefore, applicant is required to develop it as a public open space.
How about the other 9,000 square foot that would be required for a minimum size on a lot in this subdivision?
Those minimum.
How come, we're, you're proposing that we accept, the city accept a lot in this subdivision that's only 40% of the minimum size? So you're going to give it to the city, big deal. How about the other 9,000? Where's, shouldn't that be included as well? What's, what's the justification?
The justification which will be set forth in our planning testimony, we will have our planner speak next as to the planning justification, as to why it is warranted. But as I indicated in my opening statement, there is no vertical construction ever intended for that development. And when you look back to the specific requirements of the waterfront redevelopment plan, it specifically contemplates that minimum lot size in connection with construction. And because there is no construction planned for this site, it's adequately laid out to serve the future purpose of this lot as public open space. Were we to put a building here, that's where that 15,000 square foot requirement is coming from.
I think you're missing the point. I think in the waterfront redevelopment area, the minimum size lot is 15,000 square feet. And you're proposing a subdivision which includes a lot that's only 40% of that, even though you're giving it to the city. I think there should be another 9,000 square feet given to the city.
Next?
Next, Jack, did you want to say something? I'm sorry, you raised your hand.
Yes, I wanted to ask Sean, first of all, your two exhibits that you brought in. I want to have them marked, Irina and Sean, I want to have the aerial map marked as A1.
Oh, Jack, I'm sorry to interrupt you one second. Those are pre-marked exhibits?
Okay, that's fine.
The aerial, the aerial map, I believe is, is Exhibit A8, is that correct, Jennifer?
That's correct.
Okay, that's A8. And the subdivision.
We're going to use your markings, that's fine, that's okay. So we got A8 and then A3, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And, and if we're going to refer to Insights Planner's Report, Sean, we're going to need to identify it for the record and show it to the public. We'll make that, we'll make that report. We were at B, what is it?
B2.
Okay. That will be B2, and that was authored by Jason.
Yes, that's going to be the Insight Engineering Report, Exhibit B2.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'm, and Donna Miller, did you have something that you wanted to say?
I do have a question for Mr. Delaney. I'm happy to yield. Let's see, Mr. Galoppo has his hand up. Certainly, any board members that have questions should proceed before I have my questions.
Okay, Eric, go ahead, just one moment, I'm going to, okay, there we are. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, so thank you, Irina. I know this is not an easy job. My first question, I guess, relates, probably I'd like to speak to Jen, and can you divulge to the board what order these lots are proposed to be developed in for 101, 102, and 103?
Sure, actually, with respect to that, Mr. Delaney can indicate it's specifically being done in connection with the remediation, but it is timed. Mr. Delaney, can you please state the order of the development of the three lots?
Certainly, so Lot 1.05 along Heck Street will be the first phase that's built. Then Lot 1.03 to the east of that will be the next one, and Lot 1.01 will be the final lot of the thing. So it'll go in a counterclockwise direction, starting with Lot 1.05.
And with that, how did, I guess, we'll be speaking to your architect, but I'm not sure who's the best person to answer the question is, how did you arrive at the subdivided lot sizes?
They're based upon the, the site improvements that are going to be developed as part of the site plan phase. If I go back to Exhibit A8 and zoom in, I can give you a quick look on what's going on. This is the, the development that's being proposed. So the lot, Lot 1.05 essentially runs along the park area, runs along the eastern edge of the driveway, of the drive aisle, comes across, hits the northern edge of the drive aisle here and out to the roadway. Or to include this portion of the driveway with Phase 1. Phase 2 will be just this, the, the building on the other side of that drive aisle that comes in at Phase 2. And then Phase 3 will be the remainder of the road through here, plus the building, breathing from the curb to the.
So I, like, I understand how the plan is drawn, but for the purposes of discussion, can you point to me on each lot, indicate what would be considered the front facade?
The front facade is, and the architect will, during the site plan application as well, but the front facade is the face, the front facing Heck Street for this building, which is building, let's try to do this right. That is building, that's building, this is actually building 2, fronting on Heck Street. That's the frontage, the driveways are essentially the rear of the buildings.
Understood.
The frontage are facing the streets, and then the adjacent lot, 1.02 to the east.
So is it characteristic in this section of our town to see homes fronting on alleys rather than streets?
Well, the homes are, the, the, the homes are all fronting on streets, the.
Two-thirds of them are fronting on streets.
Say that again?
Two-thirds of them are fronting on streets.
Correct, the one deck here is fronting on an open space, essentially a walkway that leads out to the road.
Okay.
The idea, so. The idea is to hide the driveways and the, and the, and the circulation and vehicles and stuff from the public walking around the outside of the, the property to screen it in, to keep it more private, keep it more screened from the public to reduce the visual impacts from the surrounding areas.
And, and these questions will be specifically addressed in, in the detailed testimony during this, the site plan application process. And also, we can have our planner address them when he's setting forth the, the planning justification as to why the subdivision was created and oriented in this way, and consistency with other projects, to your question.
Well, I guess, I guess to speak to the previous comment, it seems like the cart before the horse, when the, the plans for the adjacent site are literally limitless. But there is facade, there, there are lot shapes, sizes, and dimensions that are chosen that are inconsistent with general, with, with the rest of its context.
Right, one important consideration, excuse me, is that the waterfront redevelopment plan was amended in 2018 to allow for lot-by-lot development as opposed to block-by-block. And so by virtue of that, it allowed for the creation and the splitting of very large parcels of land so that you could encourage individual development along an area, so that you would not have to do
However, that.
Large-scale projects.
However, that individual development is meant to be consistent with the context and the design of the character of its neighborhoods and its surroundings, as well as its necessary connection between active uses, both downtown and on the waterfront, in this particular location. So the subdivision, allowing the subdivision without the context of the architectural site plan review puts the cart before the horse for us. Because if we say, sure, you can divide these as this, then you've locked your site plan in place.
The applicant prepared both applications and submitted them simultaneously. It was per the request of the planning department that we consider the applications individually in this particular order. And so that, that is why they're being presented in this fashion. Certainly, you know, to your questions regarding the overall design of the site, yes, it relates more specifically to the, the second piece to the application, which is the site plan, why it was arranged in this particular way, which ultimately, yes, does drive the subdivision. So it's important, you know, in the overall context. However, at this portion of the meeting where we're talking about the subdivision, where we're, we're really looking to the lot characteristics on the whole, and specifically what, if any, deviations or bulk variances we're requiring in connection with our proposed layout, and how it relates to the requirements of the waterfront redevelopment plan. I think if, if we can proceed with our testimony by our planner, we can give you better overall context of how this fits within the surrounding area and why it is justified and divided in this way. Okay, Donna, did you want to say something, or is it okay if we proceed?
No, I still have my question for.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Mr. Delaney, you said that the lot frontage deviation is going to be temporary. Can you tell us the mechanism to how that, or the timing, I guess, of the mechanism for resolving that temporary deviation?
Certainly, so the, the, I had a question going back to
I mean, I, I understand, I, I think I have a good idea of what you're planning on doing. I think Mr. Serpico will be interested in how he can construct that into a condition of approval.
Okay, well, as I said, the, the deviation is on Lot 1.01 for the, the frontage that's being reduced. Once Lot 1.05, 1.03, and 1.01 are fully built out, all have their RAO remedial action outcomes from the DEP. I squared away for that, and all, all improvements have been constructed. The intent is for all three lots to then be consolidated into a single lot. In terms of timing, I don't have that, I can't provide you, provide you with a timing, how quickly they're going to build everything out, or how the construction sequence is at this time. But they will be proceeding, you know, I mean, upon approvals, they would be getting going, starting on Lot 105. And as soon as they get that remediate and start coming up, they're going to move to the next lot and start the remediation while the building is going up on, on Lot 105. So it's not going to be do 105, build the building, get everything set, start selling it, and then start construction on the next one. It'll be clean up the one site, go, get, get into the DEP as fast as possible. And as soon as they can start doing that, then they will move to the next site and keep going around to get those, get the pieces cat, you know, in accordance with DEP requirements to do so. So certainly after all of the DEP approvals for the RAO are done on 101, I would assume that, I would expect that the consolidation would occur for the proper, for the, for the property.
And, and this is cleanup of soil?
There's a historic fill on the site, which is consistent with other properties. So it's just capping, which is clean fill over landscaped areas. And then the pavement sidewalks and buildings will serve as the cap for the other areas, consistent with what the other developments have done.
So it's a really hard thing to achieve.
Say it again?
It's not a, it's not a hard remediation to achieve, this is something that.
Correct, it's, it's fairly straightforward, because the, the historic fill is just, it's just soil materials has to be covered, essentially. There's no, you know, really, really, I guess, the bad, you know, chemicals or bad remediation materials have to be taken out for spills or anything like that. It's, it's a very clean, fairly clean site, except for the soil that has to be just, you know, capped on top, it can't be exposed.
I may.
And, and just to add to that piece, there are specific construction timeframes and windows set forth under the subsequent developer agreement that govern the construction of the three phases and the timing, so that by the time the subsequent developer applies for building permits for the first phase, they are moving and applying, or, or, excuse me, by the time that they complete, the first phase, they're applying for building permits to commence construction of the second phase, so that they continue in progression. The timeframes are approximately up to 12 months to build each of the three strings. The public open space piece must be constructed by completion of the end of the first phase. And all of that is set forth specifically under the SDA.
Jack here, I need to speak. I've had my hand up, I, I need to speak, okay. Jennifer, we're going to need, the board's going to need to know the contents of that document. They're going to need to have an understanding of the length of time that you're projecting, under whatever agreement you have with the city outside the scope of the board, for the construction of the project. So they realize what they're dealing with in terms of how long it's going to take to build the three structures, reconsolidate, and so on. So they know the extent of time that the variance for frontage over on Heck will have to be granted.
We can provide the board with a full copy of the subsequent developer agreement. Excerpts from it relating specifically to the requirements regarding the public open space piece have been pre-marked into, well, have been pre-marked for purposes of this hearing as Exhibit A12. So portions of the SCA are already marked in the event that there were questions this evening.
Okay, I, I think it would be in your best interest at some point to have somebody, even if it's you, give, give a timeline of what's, what's expected, so the board sees it and feels it, rather than having to dig through a document to find it.
Yes.
Okay. Also, going to some of the questions that have been asked by two board members. This has received conceptual approval from the redevelopment agency before it was forwarded over to us, correct? With some recommendations?
Correct, Jack.
I'm sorry?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Is there any requirement within the WRA that the remaining triangular piece, I forget what lot number that's going to be, that's not going to be developed at this time? Is there any requirement that it be developed in conjunction with this lot, with these, with this portion?
With Phase 1.
Yeah, is there, when, when, when that tract is developed, will that be incorporated into these three or four tracts? Or could that be a possible standalone project?
I'm trying to, you're talking about Lot 1.02?
Yeah, the, yeah, I've got it.
I believe that'll be a standalone project.
Okay. So under the, under WRA, you're allowed to, you're allowed to do this this way with the amendment in terms of lot sizes. As you said, Jennifer, it's not a block by block. So the entire triangular piece bordered by Heck, Bond and Cookman did not have to be developed in one singularly. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that that's, it's, is it, it's very possible then that proposed lot 1.02 will have its own project on it at some point in the future unrelated to this project?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Just so we have an understanding. That's okay. Go ahead.
We can also have Mr. Delaney. He he can specifically testify as there are specific requirements and the construction timeline is set forth as a part of our response to prior comments regarding the construction timeline.
Sure. Sure. I think the board needs to see that. It'll sure help with resolutions if they're if the project's approved.
We can do that and and we'll incorporate that as part of our site plan testimony.
Okay, Mr. Delaney, I think you can go ahead now. I'm sorry.
This is Eric Alupin again. Is, so will there be a required approval of the subdivision prior to moving on to consideration of the site plan and architectural elements? That's the question for Jack. Or will we be able to hear this, then hear that and then visit? Because I think one really drives the other.
Well, they were noticed together. Jennifer, how do you feel about that? We're going to just approve the, you want them to approve or vote on a subdivision without having seen the totality of what's going on the site?
Would I, yeah. So my point is that approving the subdivision without the site plan, without consideration of the site plan, is not giving the planning board appropriate parameters to understand the factors that went into shaping both the developable lots and the public open space lot. Not to mention, if we approve the subdivision, it locks in many of the design choices you've already made in the site plan. And so it seems that while we can certainly consider the subdivision of the property and see that it has justification for being combined and then re-subdivided, there is a variance being asked for on the factor of the open space.
Right.
Not to say that it's insufficient. I'm not suggesting it's insufficient.
No, we we appreciate your comments and and we we do not have a problem with the board delaying the vote on the subdivision until after the site plan testimony has been given and then deferring the vote until the end of all of the testimony on both applications. Because that was, that was how we originally presented them and applied.
Yeah, that makes the most sense. Eric is correct.
Thank you.
And and Eric, thank you. Just to clarify, the planning department of the city is the one that asked for these applications to be separated into two applications with the subdivision going first. So if the board sees fit, then we can go on with that.
Yeah, I I don't want to hold it up. I just want to make sure we don't have to agree to this before seeing that.
You don't want to be backed into a corner.
Correct.
That's the way, yeah, I get it. Okay.
Right. And we understand, we understand and appreciate that and have no issue with that.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Delaney, I think you can continue.
The only, the only next step was going on to exhibit B2, the insight letter from April 28th, 2020. And there were three comments that dealt with the major subdivision completeness review. They're on page two of nine of that report. We can, we can agree to all three of those conditions. One of them is just a clarification on the bearings and distances on on one of the lot lines. One is just some information needed in the title block of the subdivision plat. And the third one is the approval from the tax assessor on the final lot numbers for the property. So we have proposed these lot numbers and we're pending approval of that from the city tax assessor. And the plan will be updated as as part of the condition of if approved will be updated as a condition of approval to represent those those lot, those approved lot numbers.
Sean, can you identify the numbers on page two that you're referring to?
Sure. The numbers one, two and three at the bottom of the page.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay, this is Rick Lambert. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, any questions from our professionals? Okay, then I guess we'll look up to public questions.
Irene, anyone in queue that wants to question the witness?
Just one moment, Jack. It's, it takes a little while to go down the list. There's a lot of people here.
I can't see that from here, so I don't know.
There's 52 participants.
Yes.
I don't know.
So I'm going to call on a phone number ending in 3350 now. You can go ahead and speak.
Hi, Ernest McNolay, 400 Deal Lake Drive, apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I have some questions to the, I believe it's the site engineer, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you stated you're the same engineer for some of the other, let's say, I-Star, Asbury Partners LLC projects, including the the Beach Club, correct?
I have worked on other sites for the app, for the master developer and software developers in this in the waterfront. Yes.
Okay, good. Well, I'd like you to know, I'm sitting right in front of your work now. I'm sitting on Ocean Avenue in front of the Ocean Club and I'm looking down at North Beach. So I kind of feel, and to my right is what you're talking about, the Cookman Heck, Asbury Avenue development. And first of all, I'd like to say that one of the board members asked you a very pertinent question about the 4,000 versus 15, or 4,000 versus 16,000 square feet, public, I guess, use or public access, whatever it is, a park or whatever it's supposed to be. And I don't really think that an answer ever came. It sort of stated that, well, when the time comes down the road and when we're and we're planning to develop the the last piece, at that point, we'll discuss where the 9,000 feet's coming from. And I didn't consider that an answer, but maybe you can clarify for me.
Yeah, I think that was a, you you had brought some information on that.
Sure. If I could just speak to that. So the minimum lot size variance, the bulk variance that we're seeking is only for
Wait, just so we know, I'm sorry. Just so we know, in the beginning of the meeting, he says everyone always has to say their name. Now, prior to this, someone named Donna spoke, and I don't know who that is. Maybe it's the city manager, but don't people have to identify themselves fully? Because you you keep referring to everybody by first name. And I think you may have a few Donnas there and and I don't know people by their first name. So I would appreciate it before everyone speaks if if we follow the rules like it was stated by
This is Rick Lambert, the vice chairman, and I will ask that when everyone speaks to please identify yourself first name and last name so that everyone's clear on who is speaking and there's no confusion.
So this is Jennifer Porter speaking. I'm the attorney for the applicant, AP Triangle. In answer to your question regarding the lots, the lot that we are seeking, the minimum lot size bulk variance from is the public open space lot. That lot is proposed to be 6,092 square feet. It will never be developed with construction. It will be conveyed to the city once landscaping plans for that public open space have been approved by city council. It will continue to be maintained by the master developer for a period of five years. The other lot that you are speaking about is the remainder lot listed on the plan in front of you. It's lot 1.02. There are no plans in place for that development, but that lot vastly exceeds the minimum lot size requirement. It's 84,767 square feet.
Is that the answer? So where where does the other 9,000 square feet come from? That's what the board member asked, and that's what I'm asking. And yet you're telling me about an 84,000 foot parcel that we can't really see, at least me and the public. I don't, I'm trying to visualize. I I know the area almost like the back of my hand, but this is very difficult. I think what you're saying is because there's an 84,000 square foot piece yet to be developed, retro after, after you get the major subdivision, which will include only a partial bequest to the city of 4,000 for the park instead of 15,000, that everything should be approved. I guess on on trusting the developer in the future, we'll come back and say, well, here's your 9,000 square feet for the public access. But based on experience from a lot of people in Asbury, I don't know.
What are you doing?
What?
Nothing. Irene, unmute me, please.
You're unmuted, Jack. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. McNolay's characterizing testimony. He's testifying. The question was asked where the other 9,000 square, 9,000 square feet's going to come from? The answer was, it's not. That's why they're asking for the variance. That's their answer. What's the next question?
Well, why are you going to allow that? Why are you going to vote on that?
They're asking for a variance. They're allowed to ask for a variance. If the board grants it, they grant it. If they don't, they don't. There's no discussion about this.
Okay, 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 Mr. Serpico. You take over as usual.
No, I'm in, look, you're going to, you're going to play by the rules. Ask the questions and don't comment about me, okay? Just ask your questions. Go ahead. Ask your questions. Let's go.
Are you finished with your questions, Mr. McNolay? This is Irene.
No, I'm not. But, you know, Mr. Serpico has a habit of
Okay, please continue with your questions.
Ask your questions, but we're not going to record.
Can you make this up? It's a good thing the public hears all this. So anyway, we're back to that that 9,000 square foot. Are you saying that overall, whether it's now or in 20 years, at some point
Mr. McNolay, that's not what I said. This is Rick Lambert. They're they're asking for a variance. They're saying that they are going to, in the subdivision request, they're going to create a lot that is deficient by 9,000 square feet. And it's up to the planning board to decide whether or not we will accept that subdivision request. There's no, there was no deal that they're going to provide some 9,000 feet at some later. There was no testimony to that. The testimony is that they're going, they're asking to create a deficient sized lot in this re-subdivision, and that's what we have to consider.
Okay, I understand. So that answers my question. Thank you. In other words, what you're voting on is 4,000 square foot, public use. End of story. I understand that. Now that's clear. Thank you. My next question is, is in 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 the team, in the team that put this plan together, I guess, working with, I guess it's Asbury Partners, I-Star, and then ultimately Triangle LLC, i- is it the 200-foot list that's sent out, is that from all directions of the of the parcel?
Yes.
North, south, east, east and west, right?
Correct. It's a 200-foot boundary that surrounds the entire triangular parcel, all 28 individual lots, which is prepared by the city tax assessor, certified, sent to the applicant, and we rely upon that list.
All right. And and you know the age of that list?
Yes, we actually requested a new list at the beginning of May. So I believe that the list is dated May 1st, and I can confirm that for you.
Oh, great. So it's a current list. And just one question. Do you know the total number you came up with?
Of of what, individuals?
Of, yeah. Well, I don't know if it's, I don't think there's any businesses. Maybe there are, but of of all that were notified, in other words, what was the total number? You know, as it relates to these requests for subdivision, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
It was less than 100 individuals. If you look at the premarked exhibits, which are set forth on Asbury Park's website, and you look at exhibit A7, that exhibit is a copy of our affidavit of mailing and publication. It contains a complete list of every individual who was notified by certified mail.
Okay, so it was 100 people?
No.
No, it was, it was less than that. The exact number set forth in the affidavit.
Well, then what's the number?
She doesn't know it. She doesn't have to. It's in the list.
How am I, how do I talk to the lady? And every time I hear Mr.
You're supposed to be talking to the witness. You're not, you're supposed, your questions are supposed to be to Sean. And you've gone way beyond the scope of that. You haven't talked him about, you asked him one question about his testimony. He gave you an answer and then you're talking about other things. Now, if you want to see the list of property owners, it's part of the record. You're perfectly entitled to look at it.
Well, wait a minute. All of this relates to what's on the floor tonight for voting. So how you say it's not related
It's not related. It's a George Stichel issue. It's a George Stichel issue. I reviewed them. They were in proper form. They were, I went over that list in detail. If you want to see who's on the list and how many numbers are on the list, there's an exhibit that you can look at anytime you like.
Your question should be directed to Mr. Delaney about his testimony. That's what your question should be, Mr. McNolay.
Well, you know, I would try, but can I, I can ask him, if he's the engineer and he had to notify people.
He didn't.
So you're saying I should ask him?
He's not responsible for sending out the notification. That's not his job.
Okay, okay. All right, let's move on because, you know, it's like an uphill battle with this team. I always feel like I'm on one team.
Just please ask the questions related to the win.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So for the engineer, in in terms of the planning and the site development, you mentioned that some of the property has some, I guess, EPA issues. Is that correct?
This is Mr. Delaney. I mentioned that the site has historic fill, which is governed by the NJDEP and must be capped in accordance with their regulations for residential development.
I think I know what that means, but does that mean like when buildings were torn down that may have been polluted and they were buried in the site and then capped off, that that has to be dealt with if you're going to put residential on there by capping it with two or three feet of clean soil? Is that what it really means or no?
It is. I testified that in areas of landscaping, that clean fill would have to be put over the top of it and the areas of the proposed areas of asphalt, concrete sidewalk and the building slabs would function as the caps in those other areas.
I get it. So it's a, it's a way of safeguarding the residents from whatever could come up from the ground, either in fumes or or water table emission or something like that. Okay, I get it. So and how many square feet in all so far from your plan are you dedicating to capping? Or you don't know yet?
The, for, I I know all of lot 101, 103 and 105 as part of this application be capped, and I'm assuming that because public use for 104, that that some capping would be required on that site as well in terms of overall areas.
Thank you. I'm muted.
It would be
So the the total piece is 84,000 square feet?
The the total residential, where where the proposed residential development is going to be placed is just under 89,000 square feet or 2.04 acres and then
Okay, but the, but the But the collection, the collection of all the land, including for the public bequest of the park, all of it is is what, over 100,000 square feet?
187, I believe I said.
Okay. And what you're saying is
179.
What you're saying is that all of that at some point will be covered with either earth, land, sidewalk, asphalt or foundation, which will serve the requirements as a capping of what may be polluted underground. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. And you mentioned that that there seems to be, both the board and me as a listening public and a homeowner here, that there's some issue about what item you're going to vote on first and then what presentation was made first and and second. And I'm okay with that, except for one thing. The board seems to agree, at least as it was presented, that sometime later in the meeting, they'll be presented with what could be a complicated document. Now, I'm just wondering, would they have enough time to review that in order to vote? Or has it already been decided that we're not voting tonight?
Um, this is Rick Lambert, and we most likely will not get to vote tonight because I believe it was discussed that the meeting would end around 8:45. Is that correct, Irina? I mean, are, um, around nine o'clock?
Yes.
Right. So we most likely will not be able to vote on the, the entire application tonight. So it'll be carried to another meeting.
All right, thanks, Mr. Lambert. So then there's no need to labor that point. Uh, I think one, one other thing. Uh, the board chairman, uh, has, I think, recused herself from this voting or just from this meeting or from both?
From this application.
Oh, from the app. So in other words, the board chairman, Ms. Kursak, will not be voting at any time on this application?
Correct.
Okay. And, and am I allowed to ask, uh, the engineer? No, I, I guess I can't. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, the engineer in the absence of the board chairman of the planning board, uh, are, are you okay with proceeding? Do you feel that whoever took over, I don't know who it is, is, uh, it's, it's okay? You are.
Are you, what is your question exactly? I'm not sure I understand.
I, I, I mean, as the engineer, are you accepting who is filling in for the, the conflicted board chairman? Are you okay with that?
That's not my, that's not my decision to make.
Yes. This is Jennifer Porter, the attorney for the applicant. We are aware of the chairwoman's recusal on this matter and have elected to proceed.
Okay, all right. I, I understand.
Okay, we have a lot of other questions. Mr. Magnoli, are you finished with your questions?
Well, no, I had one more about the site.
Okay, one more question related to the testimony.
I thought I could ask as many as I wanted, but anyway. Uh, at, at any point of this property, on any border, on any size, in any way, is it within the holdings of any city official, like the city manager?
What was that?
What's the question? I don't understand the question.
Uh, in other words, in other, you said you sent out less than 100 notifications, and, and this is relative to the engineer in terms of you're going to confront questions from all the people concerned. And all I'm asking, is there in the 100 that you notified or less, a city official or and in particular, a city manager within 200 feet?
We're, we're not going to discuss.
That's all, that's all public record. You can look that information up on their website as.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay, so, all right. I'm, I'm just, I'm just pleased, I'm pleased that you're not going to vote tonight, and I appreciate the courtesy of some of the board members to be patient with me and explain. I think you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there any other public? I'm sure there is.
Well, no, they have to call on us.
Yeah. Irina, would you like me to call on the next one?
She seems muted.
Sorry. Then the next person that we're going to call on is Liz Stale. Go ahead and speak, and excuse me if I pronounced your name wrong.
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, fine. I, I am Bill Staley. I'm here with Liz Stale. Um, and we are residents of the Monroe, uh, which, uh, as has already been pointed out, uh, borders the, uh, proposed development to the west. Uh, and I wanted to follow up on some of the questions concerning proposed Lot 104. Uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Lambert, uh, was the first to question about that. And so Mr. D, a question to you, if I may, is what would it take to make that lot conforming? It's proposed as a non-conforming lot, 40% of what's required. What would it take to make it conforming?
I, I'm. We're not, we're not asking for a conforming lot at this point, based on the design we've put together.
Well, I know you're not. I know you're not. I'm asking you, what would it take to make it conforming?
Well, that's, that's not really part of the, the application is for a non-conforming lot, a size, a lot that is not of the, uh, required size. So it's, it's not, there's not a negotiation as to what can be done to make it conform. The application is for us to consider a lot that size.
Okay. I, I would, I would simply say, Mr. Lambert, I would think that, uh, in, in the board's considering whether to accept an application that proposes a non-conforming lot, the board would want to know whether it's a hardship to make it conforming or whatever. So let me ask the question a, a different way. If the board were to ask you, Mr. Delaney, and your, and your, or ask your client, and your client were to ask you to come back with a plan showing 104 as a conforming lot, would you be able to do that?
The only thing I can say is if, if we had to make it conforming, we'd have to find 9,000 square feet more to put into that lot.
No.
How would that configure? I don't know without looking at it, but we'd have to find 9,000 more square feet.
Okay, well, Mr. Lambert, I would simply say, I would, I would think that the, the board ought to consider asking the applicant to propose, uh, the a- application or reconfigure the application so that 104 would be either conforming or more nearly conforming than simply 40%. Uh, and, and that's, that's the only questions I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Jennifer Porter. If I could speak to that point, um, we just wanted to make the board aware of the fact that when we originally looked at the development of a portion of the triangle, um, there was consideration given to the fact that we could increase the size of one of the development lots. Ultimately, the, the subsequent developer determined it would be better to create public open space with that remainder lot as opposed to simply allowing for one of the adjacent lots to which it is contiguous to be larger. To the extent that we got a lot of pushback, the applicant was simply going to withdraw that request for that lot, but in the interest of the public good, ultimately determined it would be better to propose it and reserve it as public open space.
Understood.
Hey, hey, John Moore, just out of curiosity. Can, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I, I've been trying to be heard for the last half hour. So finally, again, if board members are being muted, I think that's totally wrong, especially when we're hearing public comments. So please take off all board members being muted during public comment.
Yes, Mr. Moore. Thank you. We will.
Um, any more questions or? Are you asking for recess, Jack?
I thought we needed it because people were being muted and couldn't, couldn't be heard, but it sounds like the mayor was able to get in. If, if, if anybody's been trying to speak and they can't be heard, then we would need a recess to unmute them or something or other.
I got you.
Yeah.
So what's, the issue is like we're muting ourselves and then, then we're being muted by, um, Irina?
I don't know.
Is that what's going on?
Uh, just to clarify, everyone is muted. If you mute yourself, then we have to unmute you as the host, and that's why I ask that everyone raise their hand if they need to be unmuted or if they have something to say.
Point taken, point noted, and we have computer dummies like me that cannot raise their hands, so I'm no longer going to be muted. I'll be open for the entire session from here on out, I hope. If not, I'm going to say this is a meeting that should be stopped immediately if board members cannot be heard.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. And for anyone else that is on a telephone, uh, calling into this meeting, in order to raise your hand, you must dial star nine on your telephone keypad. That will raise your hand and let us know that you wish to speak. And we can see everyone whose hand is raised, and we will get to you. Please be patient. Thank you.
Thank you, Irina. So I have those star nine, so I'll just stay unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is not public work. Democracy is messy.
Uh, and so, Mr. Lambert, is that okay? Can we continue with the public questions, or did you want to take a break?
Um, no, I think we're okay. I, I'm looking at the participants, and it doesn't seem that there's many hands raised, so we can go ahead and move forward.
Okay, great. And, uh, so, Mr. Stale, are you finished with your questions? I just want to.
I think he was.
Okay, thank you. The next person I'm going, the next person I'm going to call on is Lee.
Oh, okay, so you have to unmute. Good evening. Uh, this is Adrian Smith and Lee Wy Scott. Can you hear us?
Yes.
We can. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. We are also member, uh, residents of the Monroe and 601 Heck Street across the street, Lee Wy Scott, Adrian Smith. We are also concerned about the public open space, uh, lot that is deficient sized. We would urge the board to try to encourage the developer to find a way to make that open space larger. I, we think that Asbury Park and the planner, Donna Miller, can probably attest to that, that the reason Asbury Park is a nice place to live for everyone is that the open space is integrated really well with the development. This development is next. Hello? Yes?
Are you stopping us?
No, no, no.
Oh.
No, happy Jack.
Yeah. Okay, the question, I, I understand your comments, and there'll be a time for comments, but this time is specifically for questions of the witness. You're entitled to quote, cross-examine the witness, which would be, uh, Sean, the engineer. There will come a later time when you will be absolutely given time to make your opinions and comments and what you think should be done and so on, but for right now, this is the cross-examination. It's limited to the nomination of the witness.
Okay, then I have a question. Uh, are we going to hear about impervious coverage, or is that part of the site plan review?
That would most likely be part of the site plan review.
Do we have, okay. Do we also have any, uh, input, or do we hear anything more about the percentage of required public open space compared to the percentage of the lot that is to be developed? I'm not familiar with the zoning requirements. Maybe Ms. Porter or Mr. Delaney can tell us about the percentage that's required. Is there a percentage? That's what I was looking for.
No.
The, this is Jennifer Porter. The only bulk variance we are seeking with respect to the subdivision that relates to lot size is in connection with the public open space lot. We are seeking a bulk variance to allow a lot of 6,092 square feet, where development lots are required to be 15,000 square feet. Um, we are not proposing a development lot.
I understand that. I totally get it. I work in this. I'm, I, I deal with planners. Can you hear? That wasn't my question.
Yeah, we lost you, sorry.
Hello?
Yes, definitely can hear you.
I, I, I understand that, Ms. Porter. Thank you, but that wasn't my question. I was wondering if there was a percent required of open space per developable lot? Is that part of the zoning or no? Maybe the planner or someone would know that?
Um. It is not, and at this point, we are on the subdivision application, which would not be part of that.
Okay.
So, right.
Then my final question then is about, again, about the open space. What guarantees is the city, uh, going to be able to, uh, receive from the developer that that lot will indeed be conveyed to the city and be removed from the developable land of the city and, and kept as park, land, or open space in perpetuity? What guarantee will there be?
Again, this is Jennifer Porter. Um, that's, that's not a question for the site engineer. Um, as I previously indicated, all of the requirements with respect to the public open space parcel are set forth in the subsequent developer agreement, which is a public document maintained by the city of Asbury Park. It, it was approved and adopted by the board in February of 2020, and it sets forth all the requirements in terms of the plans to be provided that sets, set forth the landscaping requirements and the construction timeline for, for the public open space.
Um, this is Eric Galapo, board member, if I may.
Go ahead.
Hi. Um, so, uh, thank you, Ms. Porter. I guess I, what I sense is some confusion about a question that is, is any open space required to be provided by the underlying zoning?
No.
Okay, first question. So the second question is, or the second fact that we might convey here is that the subsequent developer agreement includes some provision of open space, but does not specify the size.
Correct.
So you are simply asking for a small lot, a lot that is smaller than would be accepted for a development lot, to be reserved for open space, but there is no requirement that an open space lot be of the si, of the minimum size of a development lot?
I get that.
There, there is no requirement that it be the, the size of a development lot. However, the SDA specifically contemplates this lot at this size as public open space. So it specifically provides details for a 6,092 square foot public open space lot.
Okay, understood. So the current subdivision plan that we are looking at conforms to the requirements of the subsequent developer agreement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. There is no requirement for that lot to be 15,000 square feet. Is that correct?
There is a 15,000 minimum square foot lot requirement.
My question is about that.
In the SDA?
Yes.
No.
In the SDA.
The SDA specifically relates to this parcel. Uh, it does not mandate it be 6,092 square feet. However, that is the subject lot, which is the subject of the SDA. So all the provisions are built around the specific parameters of the lot that's shown before this board tonight.
Okay. So the variance that is being asked for is because the lot is smaller than would typically be allowed. However, there's no requirement that this particular landowner provide open space at all, other than through the SDA?
Correct.
Okay.
And this will be set forth fully in our planning justification, which we have not gotten to yet, which explains what the specific provisions of the waterfront redevelopment plan call for with respect to the bulk requirements for lot size and otherwise than what we're doing here. So that, that will be part of our planning justification.
Okay, Jack's wants to go.
I'm sorry, yeah, if I can interrupt. Jack, go ahead.
Okay. I, I'm going to give the witness a direct answer to his question. Um, as, assuming this project were to be approved in some shape or form at the very end of the process, whatever it turns into be, it turns into be, I will make sure as conditions of approval, that that lot, that triangular lot that's being reserved or dedicated for public space will be addressed. A, that it has to be, remain as such. B, the timeline that's in the, uh, the developer's agreement, I think was a five-year plan where it's going to be maintained by the applicant and then transferred over to the city. I will make sure, my job is to make sure that that lot ultimately stays open space and the structure of how it's going to ultimately be conveyed to the city. Uh, and I think that's a direct answer to your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, uh, do we have time for one more?
Yes.
Yes, just one moment. I'm sorry, Rick, did you need to say something?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, this is Rick Lambert. I just wanted to say that I believe in Jen, uh, Jennifer's testimony that the, uh, open space is going to be developed at the same time that the first phase of the residential development occurs.
That's correct, and that is specifically, that's specifically in the SDA.
Yeah, so that should also be a condition of approval. Sure. Thanks.
Okay, and, um, there was someone waiting to speak, Rebecca?
I think Lee, this is Rick Lambert. I think Lee had another... This is Rick Lambert. I think Lee had another question.
Yeah, yeah, two more questions. Just in terms of that open space, yes, we understand that it'd be completed along with the completion of phase one. You also mentioned that they're maintained by the developer for five years, even when it's conveyed to the city. Will that five years commence at the completion of Phase Three or Phase One?
At the completion... This is Jennifer Porter. It will commence at the completion of Phase One. We cannot receive a certificate of occupancy for Phase One until completion of the public open space improvements are complete. That will be done at the end of Phase One, and that will commence the five-year maintenance period.
Okay, thank you. It seems too short, but that's not a question. The other question, and I'm not sure if it was answered, it was unclear. There are three lots, three buildings. It sounds like they're going to be phased. Is there any guarantee that all three will be developed? What if one building gets finished? Is there a possibility that the other two might not, or is there some kind of...
This is Rick Lambert. That's going to be for discussion with the site plan approval. This is just for the subdivision.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that's it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Irene, the next one?
Thank you, and it's Rebecca Cavallo. Do you still want to speak? Go ahead, Ms. Rebecca Cavallo.
No, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Next person is phone number ending in 8591. Go ahead and speak. Phone number ending in 8591.
Hello, good evening. This is Lisa Bovino calling. I reside in the Monroe, and I'm lucky enough to have another resident on Fourth Avenue by our lovely mayor. Two questions, might be better suited for the next phone call, but how tall are these buildings planning to be? Is it... How many stories?
Yeah, this is Rick Lambert. That would be addressed in the site plan review. This is only for the subdivision consideration. This is part of the application.
Okay. I know we have a four-story limit in Asbury Park. Is that something that's going to be adhered to?
That would be in the discussion for the site plan approval. That's not part of this application right here of the subdivision.
Next question. If all goes according to plan, when will building commence?
We'll discuss that as part... This is Sean Delaney, the engineer. That will also be addressed as part of the site plan application testimony.
Okay, but there is not even like a long-range ETA that you chair with us?
This is Rick Lambert. This is just for the subdivision. Ms. Delaney's testimony was just related to this dividing, subdividing these lots. That was not testified to at this time. So, all of those issues will be addressed during the site plan consideration.
Great. Thank you, Rick Lambert. Be safe, and see you at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else. Oh, I'm sorry, Alexis Taylor. Go ahead, Alexis Taylor. Do you have something to say?
This is a process question for Jack. I think he's already recommended that the subsequent redevelopment agreement be part of this testimony, and I would strongly encourage that that happen during our next meeting. The legal question that I have is, if it's already, I guess, memorialized in the subsequent redevelopment agreement that this open space lot is going to be 6,092 feet, and yet we haven't, I'm sorry, square feet, and yet we haven't actually approved the subdivision, or let's say we adjust something to be 6,092 square, 93 square feet. I guess I don't understand the process by which, like, so that open space is already memorialized. So, do we really have options within the subdivision? What's the process of those documents?
Okay. The applicant went with the redevelopment project, or, excuse me, the WRA. It's TRC. TRC works with the applicant, makes recommendations ultimately to the redevelopment agency, which is the mayor and council. They look things over, and when they're ready to approve something, they approve it, pass it on to us for our review. If someone is requiring a variance, they still have to meet the criteria for a variance. They aren't, just because it's been recommended, this is the way they'd like it, if no one's heard variance testimony, they're not granted. So, if the applicant doesn't sustain their burden of proof, not just in this case, but in any case, I'm not concerned with what the redevelopers agreement says. I'm more concerned initially what happens. And if the applicant does not comply with the site plan requirements, and they request waivers or exceptions, and the board deems them substantial enough, and the burden, applicant hasn't sustained their burden of proof, then in that case, the applicant can be turned down.
Got it.
What typically would happen is, you talk to the applicant, and the applicant may come back with some alternatives, so that it gets closer to what the board would want to see in those areas. But traditionally, we still have to look at these variances. Obviously, you know that this one variance, that's a foot and a half on frontage over on Heck Street, it's a temporary variance. Ultimately, it's going to be consolidated, and they'll have four or five times the required frontage for that variance. But as far as any other variance, you got to hear them out.
Got it. Okay, understood. Thank you for explaining that.
Okay, Irene, it looks like there are no other hands raised. Is that correct?
That's correct. We can close public questions.
Okay. Do we need a motion, or do we just close it?
No, it's when the cross-examination, when the last cross-examiner is done, you just, there's no reason to close it. What was the timeframe you said for tonight's meeting, Rick?
So, I think they are limited to two hours. Actually, I was getting ready to approach that subject. I don't know if the applicant wants to move on to the second part of this, with just 20 minutes left?
We would like to proceed. We could get through the bulk of our planning testimony by Mr. Keenan Hughes in connection with the subdivision, and it would at least complete this aspect of the application. To the extent that we don't finish questions for Mr. Hughes, we can certainly carry that to the next meeting, but we would like to proceed.
Sounds good.
Okay. Mr. Serbiko, can you please swear, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, Keenan, how are you? Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and your affiliation with the applicant, and when you're done, let me know.
All right. My name is Keenan Hughes. I'm a licensed professional planner, planning consultant to iStar and its related entities since about 2010. I've been the planner on numerous planning board applications within the waterfront, and my license is in good standing. And I've finished, Mr. Serbiko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm not taken out of context. With that in mind, and the fact that Mr. Hughes testified, I'm only talking about his credentials, nothing having to do with the rightness or wrongness of his prior testimony in any other case. Will the board waive going through his credentials in order to accept him as an expert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you take a vote, or how does that work?
No. Is anybody opposed to that? No, okay.
All right.
We're good.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Hughes, what did you do to prepare for your testimony this evening?
I reviewed the application, obviously with a focus on the subdivision aspect for this evening, visited the site and the surrounding area, and reviewed the redevelopment plan as well as the review letters, which we received from the board's professionals.
And can you please address for the board the relief being sought and the justification for that relief?
Sure. As Mr. Delaney pointed out, and I'm now sharing my screen, variance relief that we're seeking in connection with the subdivision is actually pretty straightforward. With respect to Lot 1.04, this is only in connection with the creation of a piece of open space, which the redeveloper applicant has come to an agreement with the city on in order to dedicate that specific piece of property to the city, so it will become a city-owned, public, open space parcel. This is not something that's required by the plan. There's no open space, not a certain amount that's required for the block. It is a concept that makes sense, I will say, from a planning standpoint, from my perspective. Certainly, this corner of Cookman Avenue and Heck, it's actually, yeah, Cookman Avenue and Heck, it's actually somewhat of a midpoint as one walks from the CBD along Cookman Avenue down to the waterfront. We've always felt, as a team, that it was an opportunity to do some kind of publicly accessible space in that specific area, create some visual interest. And so, as part of that, as those discussions advanced with the city, there was the concept of actually, to the city's preference, deeding that as public open space. And of course, the redeveloper will be responsible for constructing those improvements and ultimately maintaining those for some period of time. So, all that's to say that the minimum lot area requirements in the waterfront redevelopment plan do not anticipate open space uses. This is an unusual, atypical situation. When the 15,000-square-foot requirement was developed, that was intended for vertical development, for new construction within the waterfront. So, again, unique situation. This is only, this is deeding a piece of property to the city for open space that's not required. And specifically, the lot area is 6,092 square feet, whereas 15,000 square feet is the minimum required. And then the frontage of that particular parcel along Heck Street is 85 feet, whereas 100 feet is required. The only other variance that's necessary here is with respect to Lot 1.01. It's frontage along Heck Street, which is 98.59 feet. So, we're talking about just over one foot is the deficiency in that lot frontage requirement. It's, number one, quite minimal, obviously, and, in my opinion, imperceptible potentially. And also, it's a temporary condition, as you've heard. So, we're asking for what is essentially a temporary variance that, under the SDA, were required to then consolidate these lot, and ultimately eliminate that condition as part of any future development of the property. So, with respect to the variance relief, these can be justified under what's known as the C2 criteria, in which the benefits to the public here outweigh any potential detriments. So, by way of benefits, certainly this project is going to advance the concept of building more housing within the waterfront, which is a preeminent goal of the waterfront redevelopment plan. And it's also going to have the added benefit of creating additional open space, publicly owned open space, that will be developed in coordination with the city to create a really nice, publicly accessible place along the Cookman Avenue streetscape for visitors, residents, and others to enjoy in the future. In terms of specific purposes of the municipal land use law that would be advanced, I would note that certainly Purpose A, in terms of advancing the general welfare by way of developing a project which is consistent with the redevelopment plan and also creating open space for the community, would be advanced. Purpose C, which references to ensure adequate light and open space, certainly to the extent that this project is actually going to create new open space for the city, that would be advanced. E, the promotion of appropriate population densities and concentrations. Again, this is a residential development that's consistent with the redevelopment plan. We're not looking to exceed any permitted densities. It's in accordance with an overall plan for the waterfront as a whole. In addition, Purpose G would be advanced, which references the provision of sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of land uses, including residential, which again is permitted here. Purpose I, which is the promotion of a desirable visual environment. This particularly relates to the concept of creating open space along the Cookman Avenue corridor. And then also Purpose J, which is promotion of the conservation of open space. So, whereas typically just one public benefit is really, or public purpose, is needed to justify variances under the C2 criteria, I've just offered six purposes of the MLUL that would be advanced by the requested variances, which again relate to a one-foot deviation on Lot 1.01, which is temporary, and then two conditions related to the public open space, which is, has nothing to do with any specific development project. It's simply to create a piece of property that can be conveyed to the city for publicly owned open space. In terms of the negative criteria, there are absolutely no detrimental stated with the grant of these variances. The first prong is to discuss whether there might be any substantial detriments to the public good. In my opinion, we have a one-foot deviation for Lot 1.01, which is temporary, will go away. And then with respect to the public open space, we're talking about creating open space that's not otherwise required to exist, and the variances are necessary only to create a piece of land that can be conveyed to the city, so that remains city-owned public open space in perpetuity. So, there's no substantial detriments to the public good related to either of those specific proposed lots, which have deficiencies. And moreover, in terms of potential impairment to the zone plan, as I stated earlier, the 15,000-square-foot requirement is, anticipates actual development. That's not occurring with Lot 1.04. Will be maintained as open space. So, granting variances for this specific piece of property does not impair the intent of the redevelopment plan, which is to encourage projects to take place on lots that have a minimum threshold of 15,000 square feet. Does not at all undermine that objective of the redevelopment plan, nor does the grant of the variance for the frontage along Heck Street for Lot 1.01. Again, it's a one-foot deviation. That is a temporary condition. Ultimately, that will be consolidated into the larger project. So, while we've touched on a number of issues so far in this application, my testimony tonight is really just focused on the subdivision. And in order to demonstrate the proofs necessary for the board to grant this subdivision, we really just need to address these three variance conditions. So, one relating to Lot 1.01, the one-foot deviation, which is temporary, and then the two related to Lot 1.04, which is intended entirely to create a parcel that will be deeded to the city for city-owned open space. So, in my opinion, the applicant squarely meets the intent of the C2 criteria, and that there's public benefits that will be advanced in connection with this overall development, specifically the subdivision, which far outweigh any detriments, because there really are none by way of impacts to the public good or impairment to the zone plan. And with that, that concludes my direct testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Is there any questions from the board? We have a few minutes.
John Moore, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Keenan. So, 104, 609, two square feet. So, if this is going through and everything, that would be editor or Rossi list?
Well, I think that would be at the discussion of the city, but to the extent it's going to be deeded as city-owned public open space, I imagine the city might want to add that to their Rosie inventory.
Okay, and then a follow-up question. I'm not suggesting, I'm just thinking, so, down the road, there'd be no restrictions. So, if we wanted to make a pocket park out of it, because the square footage is probably bigger than the square footage of our pocket park on Fourth and Heck, the city would be able to do that?
I don't see why not. As long as it's consistent with whatever guidelines and requirements are in the SDA, I think it's an excellent opportunity to do that type of park.
Thank you.
Irene, I think you're unmuted. I'm mute.
Michael Sullivan, go ahead. You're unmuted.
Michael, I think you're on mute.
Okay, now I'm unmuted. You know, when the waterfront redevelopment plan was originally adopted, it really envisioned that the principal open spaces...
You going to testify?
No, I might have.
Right hand. You solemn swear the testimony about giving this man the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I promise.
Okay, please state your name for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Michael Sullivan, Planning Board Planner.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
But just a little background, and most of you may know this, when the waterfront redevelopment plan was adopted, it really envisioned the open spaces as the large, you know, citywide open spaces of the beach, the boardwalk, you know, Bradley Square and the lakes. It didn't really think too much about this. So this is, as Keenan said, it is a bonus. It's something that wasn't planned for in the block, and it is a bonus. So, you know, I agree that the it does advance the purposes of municipal land use law with respected light air and open space. The issue that the mayor raised with respect to the Rossi, Green Acres essentially assumes that any open space that you have is on the Rossi, whether you put it on there or not, unless you have some reason or rationale that you want to explain to Green Acres why you wouldn't want to do that. So in all likelihood, it would end up on the Rossi at some point. But that's, that's really all I had to say.
Okay, thank you, Michael. I think Alexis.
Has her hand up, Irene?
Yes, Alexis Taylor, go ahead.
Yep, this is Alexis Taylor, Planning Board Member. I'm just adding on to what Mayor Moore said, which is that I do think it's important that it opens space and be part of the Rossi, and I think that that should be memorialized in the actual plan agreement, because it permanently encumbers that space. And the trigger for the Rossi is a little bit different, depends on the timing of the transfer and everything else, but just ensuring that it's permanently encumbered, public open space will matter. And then for further consideration, this really goes to the next part of the application, which is design of that open space to make sure that it really is public, in particular the way that it interacts on the northern border with the proposed lot line. So I just think that that's something to consider in the next application.
Okay, thank you, Alexis. This is Rick Lambert. I don't see there any other board members with questions, and given the time, I'd like to get a motion to carry this to the meeting, if that's okay with you, Ms. Porter.
I had a specific question about when we would be carrying this application. I know I had discussions with planning staff, specifically with Irene and Michelle Alonso regarding when would be an appropriate next hearing date, and they indicated that we would discuss it with the board this evening.
I have documentation from Irene that refers to June 8. Is that, is that valid, Irene?
Yes, so we're going to just take a consensus with the board members to see if everyone is available on June 8. That is a Monday, and the time can be negotiated as well. It doesn't have to start at 7:00 PM.
Okay, John Moore here. I apologize, I did not read the agenda. I didn't know we were ending at nine, we usually go to 10, because Keenan started his testimony, and we're like, we're through the board comments. I don't see like the public comments being more than an hour. I would ask that we wrap up Keenan tonight, and like, I'm not looking to make this an eight-month process. I mean, I don't know why, again, I apologize, I did not know we were only going to nine. My bad, I did not read it. But I mean, if we were in public, we go to 10 the earliest, why not go another half hour or so tonight?
This is Rick, is there anything from the board? It's fine with me.
Right, and again, I apologize, it's not like, oh, is it going to go at the dinner or something? All the restaurants are closed, we're stuck here. So again, just trying to move things in a decent process. And again, my, my bad, I did not read it, or else I would have said that to Barbara and Rick you sooner, and Irene, Jack, everybody, I apologize.
Ms. Porter, are you amenable to that?
The applicant has no issue with that, we're happy to proceed.
Is there anybody on the board opposed to that?
Nope.
I guess then we'll move forward. So are there any other, this is Rick Lambert, are there any other questions from the board? Are the board professionals?
Not here.
Then I guess we will open it up to the public. Oh, I'm sorry, Alexis, you raised your hand.
Okay, this is just one more. Is this the same exhibit that was submitted by the engineering professional?
Jen, I have, this is exhibit A3.
That's correct.
Okay, and that's the same, that was the?
Yes, and that was submitted as part of the original site plan application.
Okay, my only question about it is, like, if you just zoom out just a tiny little bit, it does have the floodplain FEMA floodplain lines on it, but it says that both of, and I agree that we are looking at the subdivision of lot 102, it says both those zones are zone X. I believe that the outermost or easternmost zone is AE, is that correct?
That's something we can have.
If you would just look into, I just want to make sure that it's, it's such a minor point, but it it does matter that it's correctly labeled, so if you could just make sure that it's correct. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Alexis. Anyone else in the board or board professionals?
Jack, go ahead.
What's this exhibit you were testifying from, what is it marked?
It was premarked as exhibit A3.
A3, okay, thank you.
Irene?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Lambert, I'm sorry, Mr. Henry, you're unmuted.
I have, I have a question that kind of relates to both the site plan and the subdivision plan. And I'd like to bring it up now because of the testimony that Mr. Hughes just presented to us about lot 1.04. If you look at the, and I don't remember what sheet it is, but if you look at one of the site plan sheets that shows the layouts of the driveway, you'll see that the alleyway between the lot 1.02, 1.01, I'm sorry, 1.03 and 1.05 backs against that lot 1.04. And I'm not sure what the turning radiuses of the fire trucks would be, but by crossing from Cookman Avenue, crossing lot 1.04, they could get into that alleyway. I don't think it should be a public access, but by the same token, that is something that should be considered if we're going to approve lot 1.04 in its present configuration. And maybe Mr. Keenan, I don't want to get into testimony about the site plan, but maybe he can give us a little insight into that possibility as we're discussing this subdivision plan.
Well, I would say, you know, we're getting a little bit outside of my area of expertise in terms of onsite circulation. What I can tell you is, you know, you raise a valid question, and it's something that we can demonstrate once we get into the site plan, how emergency service vehicles will service this property. And I think our engineer will be prepared to testify to it at that time. I'm not so sure that the actual subdivision that we're requesting is pertinent to that concern, just due to the, you know, specifically the variance relief that we're requesting in the configuration of the overall lots. But since we're not asking for approval on this aspect now, you know, ultimately, you'll get your answer before there's any vote on the subdivision.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's my concern, Mr. Hughes. I don't want to get locked into a subdivision approval and then come back and say, hey, wait a minute, we got another problem here, or another possible use.
Understood.
So I, that's, and maybe, maybe this is something your engineer might want to consider for his testimony during the site plan approval phase.
Yeah, Mr. Delaney will present specifically on onsite circulation and all of the questions that you just asked, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
This is Rick Lambert, I think we'll open it up to public questions now.
Thank you, Rick. I have Rebecca Carvallo, go ahead and speak.
Hi, it's Rebecca Carvallo, 801 Kingsley Street, Unit 2, in Asbury Park. My question was whether, Mr. Hughes, if the subdivision is approved, would that have any impact on what could be developed on the proposed lot 1.02? Or what if, I guess the better question is, what if any impact would the approval of this subdivision have on the development of proposed lot 1.02? Thank you.
The only implication for proposed lot 1.02 of this subdivision plan is just defining the size of that particular parcel. So it doesn't set in stone any other parameters in terms of use, height, or other, you know, bulk provisions that would be applicable to that development, because that's all dictated by the waterfront redevelopment plan, which, which is not changing. So it's simply just defining the total area and dimensions of that particular parcel, which will be available for future development.
That was it, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else.
I think Mr. McNally has his hand up.
Oh, yes. Mr. McNally, you're unmuted, go ahead.
I'd like to start by saying thanks to whoever saved me by the bell here. Ernest McNally, 400 Dale Lake Drive, Apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. So for the planner, I had a question. Certainly, planners for subdivisions think about the total aspect of the community, the public, the developer, the city, all, everything in conjunction, that's what a planner does. So my question about this plan for this subdivision and this open air space is, as to the location of it, on the, and correct me if I'm wrong, 130,000-plus square foot lot and all?
I don't have that number right in front of me.
Well, I think someone referenced, the engineer, that it's well over 100,000, 100,000 square feet. So my point is, my point is about this lot, when you refer to people as it's going to be something for open space, open air, and it's for the public and for the community there, here's my question. We're talking about a lot, as proposed, of 69 feet by 100 feet. That's kind of small. Now, from that, we're going to invite 168 townhomes, I guess, with maybe two, three people in each, plus the public, into something that's about 69 feet by 100 feet. And I'm wondering how that planned out for you. And then the question, why did you place it at the west end of the development and not the east end, so that at least the open air lot could get some breeze from the ocean instead of being at the west side of the lot where it's going to be kind of surrounded by the development? So you can correct me of all the mistakes I made, but go ahead.
Okay, so as I indicated in my direct testimony, obviously, the development that's contemplated here is for the westerly portion of the lot. This does not exclude the opportunity for any additional open space on the balance of the lot. And it's contemplated at this time, but certainly doesn't preclude additional opportunities. With respect to this specific location, number one, as was confirmed by the board planner, this is not a required open space within the waterfront. Number two, as I indicated, from a planning perspective, we felt like this was an excellent opportunity for a publicly accessible space that creates some visual interest along the streetscape, where you're probably not going to have a continuous amount of retail for really active streetscape, nor is that required under the redevelopment plan. So what are other ways to activate the streetscape and create more gathering space for the community at large? And this was a logical location to do that. But again, it's not something that was required by the plan, but makes sense from a planning perspective.
Okay, so, so, so instead of 150 by 100, which is more than double what you're proposing, it seems like you're just trying to give back to the community that's going to consider other plans that you have. I understand that, and I think it's a nice thing. But why, as a planner, would you ask for something that you say is not required and that doesn't present any opportunity for the public to say, well, we want more space? Because you're saying not even this is required. So what would be the ability of the public or anyone else to come back, once you get approved for this, if you do, to say, well, how about a little bit more land? Because then you could just say, well, look, we didn't have to give you the 6,000 square feet, so don't ask us for another 10,000 at the other end where there's some ocean breeze, and maybe the public could really enjoy it. Because, again, I'm going to belabor the point, 69 feet by 100 feet, which is what you're giving, bequesting to the city, away from the eastern end to serve 100, I think it's 68 townhomes and the public, I don't know logistically how a planner could say that on a nice day, with guests in the city, how is everybody going to get into this park? And will there be a occupancy limit on it? How's that? That's my last question, but as a planner, that's an important one. Will this lot come with a occupancy limit?
That'll be up to the city, this will be a city-owned, city-controlled piece of open space. I'm not aware of any occupancy restrictions in other public parks in town.
Okay. Okay, so that's it. And the reasoning for at the west end instead of the east end, is it just that you think, well, we'll start off with the west end, farthest from the ocean, farthest from whatever, towards the beach, and then at a later time, we'll consider more? But I'm just wondering, why couldn't you consider it the other way? Give us, give us 6,900 square feet at the east end, and then come back to us later with another gift at the west end? Could you do that?
This is, this is Rick Lambert, Mr. McNally, this isn't a negotiation, this is just a question about?
No, no, it's a question. I'm asking an examining question of the witness, he's a planner. He planned to put this gift at the west end, I'm saying.
Could you do that? This is not a negotiation, you can.
I'm not negotiating.
Ask them why.
All right, okay. That's another way of avoiding the question, go ahead. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNally. I think Doug McQueen has a question, Irene.
Just a moment. Mr. McQueen, go ahead.
You're on mute, Doug.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Doug McQueen for Wesley Court, that's in the Wesley Grove in Asbury Park. I just have a quick comment, I wanted to thank the board members that made the suggestion to hold off on voting on the subdivision approval until they've had the chance to hear some of the testimony related to site plan. As we can see, this subdivision, the way the lots are laid out, is very, very specific to a specific layout of these buildings.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
If this is just? If this is just testimony, that's going to be later in the in the meeting, this is just for questions for the?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had moved on to public comment at the end.
No, we're going to limit public comment to the end of the entire application.
I misunderstood that, I'm very sorry.
No, that's okay.
I will save those comments till the end.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate it. This is Rick Lambert, I don't see any more questions. I'd just like to thank John Moore for suggesting that we continue with this and finish this part of the application. And also thank everyone for their patience, I know this is a very difficult way to hold a meeting, but I appreciate everyone's patience and consideration for everyone involved. So if I can get a motion to adjourn, well, actually, we decided to carry this to June 8th, is that the?
I'm sorry, Rick, just one moment, John Moore had something to say.
No, I was just going to say motion to close public, and then go back to what Rick was saying, as far as the conversation is, when the next meeting is.
Okay.
Okay, we don't need a motion to close public questions, but go ahead. So now we can go on to discuss the special meeting date for the continuance of this application, and the date requested is June 8th.
Do we have a specific timing that we're considering?
I would propose that we start a little earlier at 6:00 PM, if that's all right with everyone.
Yay!
Born member, I motion that we carry this application without further notice, June 8th, 2020 at 6:00 PM.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Michael Manzella, and a second by Alexis Taylor. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I don't hear any opposition, so. Sorry, getting some feedback, did everyone hear that? Application will be carried to June 8th at 6:00 PM.
Now, can I get a motion to adjourn?
And just, I just want to add one more thing.
Yes.
Rick, and this is a question for Jack, if you can please, this will need to be renoticed, it is a special meeting, is that correct, Jack?
Notice by the board. Not the applicant, the board.
The board, correct.
Yes, we have to, yeah, under the open public meetings, that special meeting notice, absolutely.
Okay, so then it will be carried without further notice to the public, only by the board, and will be published as usual. Thank you, Rick.
Okay. Now can I get a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, do we need a motion to carry the actual site plan application as well?
The whole thing is being carried.
Okay, great.
Yeah, both, because they're both being heard together. I made the assumption that it was for both, not for one or the other.
That was my motion, yes. Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn by Michael Manzella, a second by Alon Clayton. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Bye.
Take care, everyone.
Bye.